Hello. Hi, everyone. Sorry I'm late.
Not a problem. Just happy you're here. Okay, we have everybody here except Mr. Tibbetts was taking a young man to college. So are we ready to go?
Yep. Hold on a second. Yep, we are good. We're on.
All right. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Portsmouth Planning Board for Wednesday, August 12, 2020. First item on our agenda is continuances and modifications. Mr. Lozinski says we have that. All right, now we have a whole bunch of minutes that we have to go through that we have not gotten to since February. So we'll just go through them one at a time. This is item number two on our agenda. We have to wade through our minutes. First minutes we're going to take a look at are February 12, 2020. And just a reminder to the members of the board that if you're going to speak, present your name first, just so that we have a clear track record of who's speaking. So first thing on the agenda is February 12, 2020. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes? They should have been in your packet. Any changes, corrections, modifications?
I'd like to make a motion to the...
This is... You are. You are. Luth Harding.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was... This is Lou Harding, and I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written on the February 12, 2020 regular meeting.
Is there a second?
Second. Edward Loeb.
Thank you. All right. Are there any... Is there any further discussion on these minutes? All right, you know that we have to go through this one at a time. So let's go through it. Hearing that, I will call for a vote. Ed Loeb.
Aye.
Lou Harding.
Aye.
David Garso.
Aye.
Mr. Palladi.
Seth Pallad. Hi.
Kathleen Wilson.
I abstain. I wasn't there.
Okay. Did you get that, Dee?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. I vote aye. So the ayes. Any opposed? The ayes have. Moving on. Next agenda item is the minutes from our February 26, 2020 meeting. This was a special meeting that we had on that day. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes.
Any changes, continuances, additions, modifications? Mr. Loeb.
Mr. Chair, Edward Loeb. I was absent from the meeting. Will not be voting on it.
Anyone else?
This is Lou Harding, and I'd like to accept the minutes as written.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Kate Wilson, second.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote. Lou Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Garso.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
And I'm the only other one to vote, and that's Fabulous Net, and I vote aye. There any opposed? Ayes have. Next item on the agenda are the minutes of the March 11, 2020 meeting. It was a regular meeting for March. Everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes.
Mr. Chair, Edward Loeb. I will not be voting on this either because I was absent from this meeting.
I assume you've got that, Dee?
Yes, I did.
All right. Any other changes, content, you know, alterations, amendments, typos? Anything that anybody have to say about this? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to... Lou Harding, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of March 11, 2020. Regular meeting to be accepted as written.
Is there a second?
Kate Wilson, second.
All right, we have a motion before. Any other comment? Any other discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Garso.
Aye.
Palladi.
I'm not... This is Seth Pallad. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to not vote because I wasn't at the meeting, but I did review the minutes, so...
You shouldn't vote if you weren't there. So very good. Fabulous Net, aye. That gets us four. The ayes have. Next item on the agenda is May 13, our meeting is May 13, 2020. It's a regularly scheduled meeting. Does everybody have an opportunity to review this in their packet? Short meeting. One of our records, if not one of the closest. Wasn't a record, it was close to it. What's the... What's the pleasure of the board?
Lou Harding, I'd like to make a motion, or a court motion to accept the minute as written.
Is there a second?
Edward Loeb, second.
Is there any other discussion about these minutes? Changes, modifications, typos? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Loeb.
Aye.
Mr. Garso. Last, Mr. Garso.
Aye.
Palladi.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Abstain.
That's right, you were not there for that one. That's right. Mr. Garso, are you there?
Yeah.
Your vote?
Aye.
Fabulous Net votes aye. Any objections? We have one. Any nays? The ayes have. Next item on the agenda is the minutes for June 2, 2020. This was a special meeting. It was again a short one to reschedule the... And I can reschedule the hearing on this. Not the top plan, it's more like... Everybody have an opportunity to review it. It's in the packet. Any other... Any discussion about it? Changes, modifications, typos? What's the pleasure of the board?
This is Lou Harding. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minute. Admitted. And as so written.
Is there a second?
David Garso, second.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Loeb.
Aye.
Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Garso.
Aye.
Palladi.
Aye.
Wilson.
Abstain.
Fabulous Net votes aye. There are no objections. The ayes have. Last item is the minutes for July 8, 2020 meeting. This is... This was a special meeting on the top plan. We were here for a couple of hours on this. I hope everybody had the opportunity to spend a few minutes and go through this in detail. I hope everybody had it in their packet. Any comments, changes, modifications, typos? Anything of that nature? Hearing nothing, I'll call for a vote. All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, you have a vote. I'm sorry. What's the pleasure of the board?
First, I'd like to... Lou Harding, make a motion to accept the minutes as written. A special meeting on July 8, 2020.
There a second?
Kate Wilson, second.
Is there any other discussion on these minutes?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Who is asking?
Seth Pallad.
Yes, sir.
So is the voting of this minute on the actual comprehensive plan, or is... Was that already done?
No, it's a recitation of what we did at that meeting.
But did we approve it at that meeting?
We recommended that it be referred to... We don't approve it. But we were recommended that it be forwarded to the town council. They approve it or don't approve it.
Mr. Chair, thank you for your explanation. That's all I have.
Anything else? All right, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Mr. Loeb.
Aye.
Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Garso.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Palladi.
Aye.
Chair, aye. Any dissent? All in favor, the motion passes. I know those minutes are done. Okay. All right, thanks to everybody waiting through them. That deals with items number one and items number two on our agenda. Third item is Donovan Gray Distributing LLC AP 28 lot 17. This is the 57 Bristol Ferry Road. And this is looking for an advisory opinion to amend a special use permit. This is the brewery thing, as I recommend. What do we have? Who's presenting?
Matt Gray.
Let's have Mr. Gray.
Hi, everybody. This is Matt Gray, 87 Colonel Christopher Green Road in Portsmouth. I'm the owner and operator of Ragged Island Brewing Company and the owner of the parcel of land at 54 Bristol Ferry Road as well, which is under the Donovan Gray Distributing LLC business entity. So we're here asking for a different but similar plan that was previously approved. In this iteration, we have decided to not build a new construction building, however, to take advantage of one of the existing buildings on the property and turn that 3,600 square foot building into our new brewing facility. It's bigger than our current facility at 200 High Point Ave in the industrial park. It'll allow for the growth that we need, but without the expense of new construction at this time.
Is that your presentation?
I don't know exactly what you'd need from us, other than the plans that were submitted. Building number three would be the building that will become the new brewery space. Currently, it's a 3,600 square foot post and beam barn construction style building with board and batten siding. Our goal is to refurbish the building and make it more usable for the brewing process, very similar to what we were going to do with the new construction that had been previously approved. This would be a facelift for this building. It's older than the 1960s. I don't have the exact date. However, it has never had any kind of repair work done to it. Half the building, as you can see in the renderings here, on the right-hand side of the building is all plastic wrapped and dirt floor on that side of the building. On the left-hand side, there's currently a slab floor, and that was more of their mechanic shed of the property owners prior to us. So our goal is to completely reclaim this barn and make it, you know, kind of almost like a brand-new building in a way. Clean it up, make sure it's safe for us to brew beer in, and then from there, we'll be able to utilize it for years to come for our business. We'll be adding a bathroom unit to it, as well as finishing off the rest of the building. New windows, new doors, new garage doors as well, and some cupolas on the rooftop. Building, as I mentioned before, had been used for previous... Previously, had been parking the tractors that were used on the property for farming. And what this will do for us is take the number of buildings on site, including new construction, and it'll remove the new construction element altogether and allow us to keep more open space on the property while still pursuing our goal of hosting our brewery on the farm.
Great. You went to the design review board. They issued an advisory opinion.
That's correct.
Is that part of the record in this case? If you do, Mr. Gray.
Yeah, I think that's it, yeah.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
You went to the designer review board.
Correct.
They issued a favorable opinion.
They did.
Do you wish to make that decision, that opinion, part of your record?
Yes, I do.
Then you have this. You'll mark it as an exhibit attached to this petition. Does anybody... Mr. Loeb.
Mr. Gray, Edward Loeb speaking. I've got your plant set in front of me. It looks like there's existing water and a planned sewer connection that also go to this building. And it looks like they're going to continue to utilize the plant that you originally had as kind of a shared beach field. Is that correct?
That is correct. We reviewed our plan that had been approved by the DEM, and we would like to continue to use the same exact plan in case we do grow our brewery in size inside the building number three as we had planned with the new construction that was previously approved. So in hopes that the future is brighter, we would like to keep the old septic plan, which was certainly larger than we need for current use. But as everyone knows, we don't want to have to go back and replace septic work, you know, five, 10 years from now.
Does any other member of the board have a question? I just have one question. Mr. Loeb, Mr. Chair.
Edward Loeb, again, this is great. So I know we had the fire department had reviewed your last submission. Although I see it in my package, do you have an objection if we make a fire department review occupancy of building three? Part of the record if the board chooses to send this up?
Absolutely. We would be seeking fire marshal approval, I think, for occupancy, so we would absolutely need that.
Thank you.
Does any other member of the board have a question for this?
Mr. Chair, Seth Pallad. How you doing, Mr. Gray?
Hey, Seth. How you doing?
I commend you for, you know, refurbishing an old building. I wasn't part of the planning board when the previous project was approved, so my understanding is that you were going to do new construction, a larger building. That building was to be torn down and, you know, a new construction put in its place.
Actually, this... The new construction would have been a standalone building in a separate part of the parcel, closer to building four, actually, between building three and building four. So it would have actually had an additional building on the property. By refurbishing this older barn, we will no longer need to build new construction. And actually, we're happily in talks with the Equinix Land Trust about preserving some of the open space, developable land that does exist and potentially getting that deeded for future, for no development in the future.
Wow, that's excellent. So my second question, my last question, have you guys had to make any sort of design changes, modifications due to, you know, the current pandemic situation? And if so, what are the...
Yeah, I mean, this whole new plan that you see today is kind of a result of trying to maybe bite off a little more than we could chew early on. And then obviously, when COVID came, making a quick pivot to a equally as satisfying and maybe potentially silver lining improvement to our overall plan that will do everything we needed to do to be successful out here at the farm, but also actually maintain more of the open space overall in the long run.
Thank you. And I heard you're going to plant hops too. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, hops and all kinds of other ingredients that we can grow locally.
Hops and stuff like that, too.
Oh, yeah. Pick your own everything, yeah.
You can mix anything with beer. Any other member of the board? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this petition?
Go over the... How to raise your hand.
I don't have that in front of me. Go ahead. You can make that statement.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm saying it right. On the agenda. That page of the agenda, I believe it's star six. Raise your hand. Or within the app, you can...
Raise your hand and dial nine.
Oh, raise your hand, just dial star nine? Star nine, star nine.
If you want to raise your hand and ask a question, dial star nine, and then you will be able to ask a question. You can mute, and then you will be asked to do it. To unmute yourself, make sure you dial star six.
If no answers.
Yeah, you got to make sure. Someone there? All right, I want to close the discussion. What's the pleasure of the board?
Kate Wilson, make a motion to accept the modifications of removing one building.
We're actually making a recommendation to the zoning board, which is going to hear about next...
Oh, yeah, on the plane.
So this is an advisory opinion to the zoning board, but you're recommending that we pass that advisory opinion on to them?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Edward Loeb, I'll second, but I'd like to ask Kate to just add to her motion that we had fire department occupancy, review of the new building, and that the previous site conditions and approvals are still in effect.
Might also include all the recommendations of the designer.
Okay, I make a modified to my motion that the fire department review the plans of the building and that all modifications are in the advisory... Our advisory to the zoning board.
Yeah, previous site conditions and approvals are still in effect. And then there's one last thing on landscaping. Design review board has specific recommendations for rental residents. Could we include that, Kate? Protective screening, right?
Yes. Can I just say, add what Mr. Loeb said?
Yeah, yes.
Well, things are a little bit choppy. I can hear half, then it goes blank, and then, well...
Have a wonderful world of technology.
Second.
Dee, did you get all that?
I did.
Everybody understand the motion? Any other further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote. We'll do it the way we've been doing. Mr. Loeb.
Aye.
Lou Harding.
Aye.
David Garso.
Aye.
Kathleen Wilson.
Aye.
Seth Palladi.
Aye.
Fabulous Net, aye. Any negatives? Motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Gray.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Equinix Gunsmithing case. This is Equinix Gunsmithing LLC AP 38 lot 6. On High Point Avenue, they're looking for an advisory opinion, I assume, for the zoning board as well, regarding the... They're close to our manufacturing facility. I think that's an issue. Who's presenting this?
Michael Murray, attorney for the petitioner. My address is 37 Mill Street, Newport, Rhode Island. I'm the attorney, Bill Breyer, who lives at 129 Indian Avenue in Portsmouth. He's the applicant as Equinix Gunsmithing Inc., I'm sorry, LLC. I also have, along with Bill, I also have John Vit, Park Avenue modular. Lynn Small is our engineer, and she should be with us, but she was at an earlier meeting at Middletown. And she may be here now.
I'm here now.
Okay, good. Thank you. So we would ask first that we had been for you before the advisory committee, and we received a favorable report from him, and I'd ask that the planning board accept the advisory opinion.
Put it on the file. Make it an exhibit.
Make it exhibit, please. And also have... We were available to answer any questions. Bill Vit had done an excellent presentation for us before the advisory board. Or I can answer any questions, or I do have the applicant online, and he's available to answer any questions. It's essentially an 1,800 square foot building, and the applicant is in... Going to put in the gunsmithing company, which is essentially the repair. Essentially, the repair, the lubrication, the inspection of firearms. There may... He would be also building custom firearms as requested, but it's not really a manufacturing plant. He would be working on his table in the center of the building, working on it on individual pieces. And there's no range. There's no firing of guns. And we presented essentially an 1,800 square foot building. And as I said, I have our engineer and so John Vit available, as well as the applicant, to answer any questions.
So is that the end of your presentation?
Well, I'd like to ask first Bill Breyer to say a few words and tell you about his proposed business, and then make John and Lynn available to answer any questions.
That's... The presentation is up to you, sir.
I'm sorry, sir.
That's your privilege. What would you like to say?
Okay, I would like to call John Vit first to explain the nature of the building and ask him to make a short presentation. John?
I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy, Planning Board of Portsmouth. Mr. Breyer was impressed with the building that we constructed at the 24 Yachts Building. On the design of his building, it's the minimum square footage that is available to Mr. Breyer to make his retirement job work. It's a very small building. It's 30 by 60. There's no mezzanine. There's no... Nothing above. It's pretty... And it's very custom. The same people that did the... Reskin the transfer station is the same people. Pridgen Steel, they're at a rent-a-mass, will be ordering the steel, and they'll be erecting the steel. Local contractors will be doing the excavation, set the system waterline all on the ground. It's the industrial park, so that's the way they do it up there from the designer review board on the colors, and we satisfied them the next day on the landscape plan.
Thank you, John. Any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Vit as far as the building or size or shape, color of the building?
I have a question regarding the nomenclature that's being used in this petition. When I look at the actual written petition, it refers to this as light industrial, and yet when I look at other parts of this, it talks about manufacturing. Had a distinction without a meaning, or what's going on with that use of light?
Okay, maybe I could ask Mr. Breyer to speak to that point, and he will... Bill, are you there? Bill Breyer? Well, we may have not...
Can you hear me?
Okay, we... I can hear you now, Bill.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this meeting. The problem or the discrepancy in the presentation was that the ATF, who I'll be applying for a firearms permit with, calls any kind of work where you assemble firearms parts, manufacturing. So say you attach two specific parts together without using any machines, not a hammer. They call that manufacturing for the purposes of their permitting. What I'm really doing is mostly repair and building target and hunting rifles, basically one-off rifles for individual customers. I'll also be doing repair work and modifying firearms to improve safety and performance, finishing and refinishing of firearms metal and work, and then doing off-site firearms testing at either Newport Rifle Club or at Tiberton Rod and Bun. and then doing off-site firearms testing at either Newport Rifle Club or a Tibbert and Roden Bun Club. As Mr. Murray said, I won't be doing any firing at the, at my shop. I won't even be chambering any ammunition at my shop.
That was one of my follow-up questions, but maybe I should talk to the solicitor. This solicitor, is there a distinction, or is it something without big issue between light industry and manufacturer?
It's the zoning district. The use is allowed in that particular zoning district. I mean, it's a manufacturing can take place in a light industrial district. I don't have the table in front of me, but I think the light industrial refers to the zoning district.
So you can manufacture in that district?
Yes, I believe so. I don't have, like, again, I don't have the list in front of me, you know. Mike could weigh in on.
Yeah, I've reviewed that. I'm sorry, I think you're looking for Michael, the.
Mike, I was looking for Mike Ashola, but Mike, Mr. Murray, you are always very much welcome.
Mike Ashola, this is the town planner. Both uses are permitted through a special use permit. It seems like the scope of work that the applicant is performing at the gun shop, it seemed like it was more of a federal service industry rather than a manufacturing side. If that's an issue, we can, when it goes before the zoning board, we can amend the application to be for both manufacturing and for a service business, but it seems like the principal use of this is a service business, not as a gun manufacturer, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'm Michael Murray. I believe the reason we put in the manufacturer is to comply with both state and federal regulation. Whereas the applicant said if he's at his workbench and he's connecting two different pieces, under the federal guidelines, that would be manufacturing. So, in an abundance of caution, that's why we had listed the application, light industrial, light manufacturing. But I think the exhibit aid to our application breaks down and states exactly what Bill would be doing. Dissembling, placing defective parts, custom work on guns, antique guns, and making, from time to time, on request, replicas of different guns.
And again, Mr. Chairman, for that, just looking at the table, uses, I mean, there are manufacturing uses are in the list of uses allowed by right or by special use permit in a light industrial district. So I think it's just a mixture.
Should be amended to show both?
Pardon?
If you're looking for both, isn't that what the petition should say? Should just say light industry and/or manufacturer?
Light industrial is the label of the zoning district. And there's, the table uses has various uses that are permitted by right or by special use permit in a light industrial district, as well as a heavy industrial district and other zoning districts. I don't understand the question.
Well, I think the light industrial would include the general firearms work and manufacturing as we're viewing it to comply with any state and federal regulations. But certainly, the applicant is not going to be mass producing firearms, is not going to have a shop that has a counter with firearms for sale. It is, it's definitely a repair facility with the option to have guns refurbished, and also to make custom guns from time to time.
All right, you may continue.
I'm sorry.
You have any other thing, anything else to present?
Well, I have the engineer available. If anyone had any questions regarding the engineering plan, the building. We have worked with the advisory board regarding the planting around the building. It's, the application includes four parking, paved parking spots, and shows the site of the building, and placement of a septic tank. And we're, and the engineer is here. If any of the members had any questions regarding that, we'd be glad to respond.
Ed Loeb, could we have your engineer just give us a brief summary of the engineering and construction attributes of the parcel for the record, please?
Certainly.
This is Lynn Small from Northeast Engineers. Good evening. This site is located on High Point Ave in the industrial park. It's got a large wetland on the eastern side. We will be going to wetlands for a permit for that. We do have a small septic system in the rear. Basically, the use on this from a wastewater perspective is very small in employee count. His number of employees is less than the septic system mandate by the state for the minimum size. So this system is 100 gallons per day, which will serve, I believe it comes out to about seven employees, where I think he is estimating a max of four. The site will be accessed from High Point Ave, and we have an 1,800 square foot building. There is a garage entry that would show as the hatched area in the parking area. We provide four paved parking spaces. The code requires seven spaces. So we provide the other three spaces just to the east of the entrance driveway as a grass surface for overflow. We're not expecting to need those, but we didn't want to have to ask for any relief from the town zoning ordinance. We also have a drainage system for the site. The site, actually, I know the wetland is to the east, but most of the site where we're developing drains northerly towards the roadway. So your drainage system ends up in the front yard. We will be capturing the stormwater with a hydrodynamic separator to pull out your sediments. It will then go into a sand filter, which will provide your required water quality treatment. And then it will go into your infiltrating detention basin that is in, just to the left of that, or west of it, as shown on the plan. Any overflow, we're going to be requesting a curb cut so that we can tie into the catch basins on High Point Ave. That's a general, generally an approved thing in Portsmouth, because the town prefers having a direct connection to the drainage versus having sheet flow onto the roadways. So we don't expect any issues with that. If we had to, we could do a surface discharge. This project will be submitted to DEM for a wetlands review, and to the septic program for the septic approval. And we are asking for advisory opinion, because we do have to go to the zoning board for a special use permit.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
Any questions for the engineer?
That's my question. Do you have any question, any member of the board have a question, or any other witnesses? By the way, does somebody want to make a motion that Lynn be admitted as an expert?
Yeah, Ed Loeb, I'll make a motion that we accept Miss Small's testimony as an expert in the field of engineering based on her previous testimony, in fact, she's a licensed engineer in the state of Rhode Island.
And Luke Harding, I second that motion.
Any other discussion? All favor of the motion. Let's see who's there. Mr. Loeb?
Aye.
Mr. Harding?
Aye.
Mr. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson? Ms. Wilson? What are all where's?
I'm mute.
Right now?
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Pilati?
Aye.
Mr. Bissonette says aye. So that's unanimous. Okay, Ms. Phillips, you were saying?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, Ed Loeb. Ms. Small, did you say the only approvals that you require would be an OWTS permit and a state wetlands permit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody else on the board have a question?
I have Kate Wilson.
Go ahead, Kate.
The, it says that there's a landscape and signage plan, and says a sea attached plan. I don't see it on the plan submission, or in the conceptual design review documentation.
I think John Vit can probably speak to that since we, for the advisory opinion, we did work with members of the advisory board and reached a decision as to the plantings. John, can you, can you address that question?
Yes, thanks, Attorney Murray. Kate Wilson, the evening of the designer review board, it was unclear what Mr. Breyer and I were going to consider to be healthy plants to grow in that vicinity due to the high water table in the wetland area. We did discuss with the board that evening, and I did submit an additional plan the next day, but the board was satisfied without my representation of white birch going up the driveway. And that's a very good tree. I understand from Huguenon that likes water, and some facilities around the building. Signage is going to be minimal on the building, and that was it. I don't believe Mr. Breyer was having any sign put out on High Point Ave. Possibly just a stone with the number, his address on it, and that was it.
Well, go ahead, Kate.
Well, I, this is Kate Wilson. I thought with all designs that there's supposed to be a stamped landscape plan included within the submission. So basically, it would show the spacing, you know, the type of tree, the size, you know, stuff, things like that.
I believe, I believe when we were done with the designer review board, and you're correct, but I don't know if it has to be stamped, but when we were done with the designer review board, I did make the representation, and Mr. Breyer and his attorney confirmed my representation that what we would send to Mike Escola after I had the discussion with Huguenon would be what we would be at a minimum, Kate, of what we were going to be planning there. We just don't want to put stuff in that's going to die because of the high water table. So a little bit more, a little bit more research has to be done.
Well, a registered landscape architect would know what plants and the proper spacing, and which plants would live. That would just help you out.
Okay.
Look, just as an aside, the landscaping plan actually recommends other things than the birch.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, we are more than ready to comply, and in fact, Bill can, the applicant prior can probably speak to this issue. This is going to be a retirement business for him, and he wants to make the setting as fitting with the rest of the park, and perhaps a little more, and is willing to work with the zoning board and the planning board to come up with the suitable plan, which I believe we were under the impression from what John had submitted, and we, myself and Bill, had responded to that the plan that we had submitted was acceptable, but we're willing to resubmit that to the planning board.
Kate Wilson, it's just that it wasn't submitted within our submission. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the board? Have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Who are you? Is that David?
This is the solicitor, Kevin Gavin. I just wanted to, on that other point we were talking about, I'm sorry if I was, if it was, I created any confusion, but it's not listed in the petition, but I think this comes under Article 5, Section E, retail business and consumer service establishments. So, and if you look under subsection 5, service business serving needs of local residents, that's an S under both light industrial and heavy industrial. So that's why, that's the type of business that this is, and I think that, and that's why they need a special use permit, that they're seeking an advisory opinion from this board.
Any other member of the board have a question? All right, let's open this up to the public.
Mr. Chair, Seth Pilat, I actually have a question. What was, what was the outcome of the landscaping decision? There's going to be a plan proposed at a later date for the appropriate conditions?
Depends on what we put in our recommendation.
It was, Mike Ashola, this is the town planner, there was a plan that was submitted to the design review board after the hearing that they agreed upon. On that plan, it had five white birches with a minimum height of 912 feet, two percentia bushes that are minimum height of six to eight feet tall, and then ground plantings were also proposed in the front, front of the building, and on the side by the parking area. And that was accepted by the designer review board, and it's reflected in the advisory opinion.
Actually, it says that's what was proposed, but they recommended something else.
No, if you go to the next page. Right here. Reway person.
That's just not a landscaping plan. I mean, the plants might be work, you know, just fine, but it's just that there is no landscaping plan, which I thought is supposed to be in the submission.
We would be happy to submit a plan to you tomorrow based on the research that we've done in the discussions with members of the advisory opinion board, and submit that through, through the planning office.
Mr. Chair, Seth Pilat, I have another question. Ms. Small, is there any plantings done in consideration of water quality treatment? As far as like, you know, biofiltration, or something like that along the stormwater retention basin?
Sorry, I was muted. The sand filter we have right now, you could put plantings in it, or it's a grass surface. Most often, it's a grass surface, and it infiltrates through that. You see more plantings in a bio retention area. So we don't have any planting spec, and in fact, as a civil engineer, we can't spec plantings. It's against our professional license to do that. So you won't find that on our plan. So I don't, the answer is no. I don't have any. We do have grass surfaces specified across the site, and there's no actual required plantings associated with our drainage system.
You?
Welcome.
Anybody else on the board? All right, let's try going to the public. Do you have anything, Michael?
You, the members of the public, if you, you can raise your hand if you're in the zoom map, or if you're on the phone, dial star nine now. We have no, no answers. Oh wait, we have one. It's the 2201610864. And you're allowed to speak now, so please identify yourself.
Your name and address.
Caller, caller, 21681486. Caller, caller, oh one, six eight one, four eight eight six four. Please speak now.
Yes, I have a question.
Your name and address, sir.
Sure, it's John Carcone, 90 McCory Lane.
All right, thank you.
So the question I have, it was mentioned that the, they were going to do machining or metalworking, refinishing the steel. Question is, are there going to be any caustic chemicals? I know some plating chemicals can be quite nasty and dangerous. And is the fire department going to do a review of the facility? Thank you.
Hang on, don't go away.
Yep.
House floor.
Yes.
We all can answer that.
We do, and I'm going to ask the applicant, Bill, who had done all the, the planning and be looking at the equipment that he's going to purchase to put in the building, to answer that first. And then we can certainly follow up with John as far as any, any other facilities that are being added to the building. Bill?
Yes, thank you. I will be doing some spray painting on, on metalwork and, but I, I will be disposing of that in accordance with the law. The other things I'll be doing don't really require any caustic chemicals. If there are some, I will, I think of those as required.
Not going to be doing any plating, you're not going to be using acids that way?
No.
Electric baths, nothing like that?
No.
Does the building, proposed building have a fire protection system?
Hang on, you're still the same, same gentleman, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, will you respond to that with respect to the fire suppression system?
I will, we will do whatever the fire department requests. My, John did, John Bit did speak with the fire department and I don't believe that they requested anything specific.
Any help, sir?
I'm good. I'm going to go back on mute. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Does anybody else? Do we know emails, none of them? Does anybody on the board have any other question of the applicant? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, Mr. Loops, that we recommend approval of the petitions, our advisory opinion of the petition for being fashioned. So be subject to approval from DEM, OWTS, which is the septic system, DEM Wetlands, pending receipt of the planting plan in compliance with the designer review hearing of eight, three, twenty. Additionally, the items that are outlined in the advisory opinion from the designer review board. And lastly, fire department review of any stored chemicals, paints and fire protection for the building.
There's second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion by the members of the board?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair, Seth Pallad?
Go ahead, Mr. Pallad.
Does, so does Mr. Loops's motion include review of a landscaping plan by a landscape architect?
That be said in relationship to the agreement that they reached with the design review today.
So they're going to comply with that regulation?
Correct. Can I answer your question? I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Loops.
Aye.
Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Garceau.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Pallad.
Aye.
Guy Bissonnet.
Aye.
All favor say aye. Motion carries. Suboxer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For the agenda. All right, last item on the agenda is item number five, which is Metairie Paint LLC, formerly Ferrera Farms, located at the intersection of Ferrera Avenue and Pleasant Avenue, AP 48 Lot 35. Approved preliminary and final plan for 18 lot major, major subdivision. Who we have on us?
I think Chris Duhamel is the engineer. And Jay Lynch is the attorney moving thing off right now.
Well, we're waiting for him to come on. We received a letter from, what's it, Mr. Day?
It's Joe Day.
Yeah, dated, dated August eighth, point, point. I would like to make that part of the record. It was submitted as part of the back. He's asked, he's asked what was this too? From Brian Woodhead. They will also ask that the date, the, the letter dated August 11th, point, twenty, Fort Smith, Grantwood, Director Public Works, also be put in the back as an exhibit.
Oh boy.
Good evening. Chris Duhamel just got to log in.
Your name, sir?
My name is Chris Duhamel, the, from Dupree Engineering, the engineer for the project.
Mr. Chairman, Jay Lynch, from the law firm, Morver Gdamo and Lynch, 97 John Clark Road, Middletown, Rhode Island.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll give you a brief overview of the matter before you this evening and I can have Mr. Duhamel address the particulars of the application. What's in front of you this evening is a application for preliminary approval for an 18 lot subdivision. The site is north of McCory Lane, west of Windstone Drive, east of East Main Road and then south of the Windstone, I'm sorry, the Wind Rock Development. The site is approximately 14 acres. We're going to access the site from the intersection of Pleasant View Avenue and Ferrera Street. We were in front of the board back in January of 2019 and received master plan approval for a 19 lot subdivision. We've reduced that by one lot. This evening, we're only seeking approval for an 18 lot subdivision. At the master plan approval stage, the board did grant us relief and gave us approval for a 25, I'm sorry, a 26 foot right of way throughout the development. One of the issues I'd rather address right away is the, the connector road between the subject premises and the Wind Rock Development to the north. What's been proposed on the preliminary plan is an easement, 50 foot easement from the interior roadway and the subject premises heading north to intersect with the easement that Wind Rock has in their previously approved plans. We understand that the board would like us to construct the roadway to the boundary of the Wind Rock subdivision. We're prepared to do whatever the board wants us to do with respect to that connector road. So we're open to any requests or suggestions that the board may have. We just want to point out as well that at this point, as of yet, Wind Rock has not extended its connector road to our boundary. This is a, an 18 lot subdivision that's going to be served by a community OSWT. It has been approved by DEM. We have provided all appropriate notices to the butters. I think within the last day or so, Leon has contacted me and indicated that Mr. Woodhead had some questions concerning the road construction. I know Mr. Duhamel did reach out to Mr. Woodhead yesterday and what we're going to try to do is schedule a meeting between our group and the town and Mr. Woodhead within the next seven to 10 days to address his particular concerns. So based upon those concerns, what we're just asking for this evening is preliminary plan approval. We hope to address all of Mr. Woodhead's concerns in our upcoming meeting and then perhaps we can be before you for final plan approval at your September meeting. So with that, I'll open up the, the floor to Mr. Duhamel to go through the, the plans that are in front of you and describe the particular subdivision.
Thank you, Jay. Again, Chris Duhamel, professional engineer and land surveyor with Dupree Engineering, with offices located at 90 Broadway in Newport.
Why don't we hold you up for another second?
Certainly.
I'll make a motion to swear Mr. Duhamel in as a professional in field civil engineering based on his previous testimony and his license.
All right, I can second that motion. Any further discussion by members of the board? Here you go, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Loops.
Aye.
Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Garceau. Wilson. Pallad.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson. Ms. Wilson? How about Mr. Garceau?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that's the majority. Registered data sustained. All right, Mr. Wilson. I'm sorry, Mr. Duhamel.
Thank you, sir. So as a point of reference, the master plan that was approved in January of 2019, it's been over close to years that we're approaching on with the preliminary plan submission and, and over that time, we've, Dupree Engineering has conducted extensive field surveys, soil evaluations, engineering site design and permitting through the RIDM, Ripti's program and RIDM OWTS program. We have approvals of all state approval of regulatory agencies at this time. At the master plan, as Jay had said, we had 19 lots and through the detailed engineering, we recognized that it was better suited to, to have 18 lots. And the reason being at the master plan public hearing, there was great concern for discharge of, of stormwater runoff even during the existing agricultural use that flowed from, from the easterly across the site to the Wind, Windstone Drive frontage lots. There's an existing swell, a dug swell that, that exists on the, on the easterly boundary that intercepts stormwater runoff from the, the agricultural fields and discharges southerly to a catch basin and a 24 inch culvert that drains to McCory Lane. During the existing conditions, that swell would actually overtop and discharge runoff to the, to the Windstone Drive properties. So with that knowledge and testimony, we looked harder at the drainage system and we looked harder at how to control that runoff and we ended up, we, we initially proposed one acre stormwater management parcel. We now included on the overall plan, two and a half acres, 2.25, I should say, acres of stormwater management control. So we've doubled, over doubled the amount of stormwater management on the site with, with two, two basins that meet the, the current stormwater manual as required by CRMC and DEM. The two, the two basins would collect runoff from the proposed roadway. The road is built to the town of Portsmouth, standards of 26 foot, 13 foot wide travel lanes, one foot Cape Cod burns, 28 foot total back of burn to back of burn for impervious surface. On the road also controls the runoff from the 18 residential homes, the driveways, the, the roof leaders would all be collected within the drainage system and it's routed to the, the drainage pond. That increase in runoff due to the impervious surface is, is analyzed. It's mitigated in the two ponds to, to be, to have a discharge that is less than what is currently discharging to the existing McCory Lane drainage system today. So we had that design concern of reducing, eliminating the flooding to, to the Wind, Windstone Drive properties and we had the design concern of, of not exceeding the runoff capacity to the McCory Lane drainage system. So we've, we've met that in both cases and we've received approval now through DEM in their review of the, of stormwater management system. Another significant design aspect was the control of the groundwater on the site. There's, there's a pressure water table on the site that would affect the road design. The clients, John Kent and Mike Kent, they constructed subdrains along the, along the frontage of the residential lots. So we met with Director Woodhead prior to constructing the subdrains and, and understood all the requirements that he'd be looking for in the acceptance of the road. Initially, I had the subdrains running down the center line of the road to optimize the number of subdrains, have less subdrains, if you will. But Director Woodhead wanted, wanted to make certain that they were not part of the road, they're part of the homeowners association. So we redesigned them and we put them on the frontage of the, of the lots and constructed them outside of the, the future 50 foot right of way. Those are constructed and monitored during the wet season and they were found to be very effective. They lowered the water table to five to six feet, thereby protecting the road base. The finished road grade being a minimum three foot above any, any seasonal high water table. So we, we proved that through the wet season that we wouldn't have on that issue. So that's one of the reasons why this particular design took longer. We had to wait through the wet seasons to, to prove that, that, that performance. So we, we have the, the road design now, the stormwater management design, the road grades. The other significant aspect was the, the community septic leach field. We worked with DEM, Mohammed Fries in the, in the OWTS section to have a step collection system where on each lot there'd be a pre-treatment, a denitrification AX 20 denitrification system, a Ranco denitrification system that would treat the wastewater on, on site and then discharge to a common sewer force main and the, the environment one grinder pumps, high head pumps that would discharge to a shared sewer force main that would route to the, the septic, the leach field lot. There's a 10,000 gallon storage tank that collects the, the wastewater, the, the 10,000 gallons is greater than the 6,200 gallons of wastewater that, that is the peak designed for 18. the peak designed for 18 three-bedroom homes. The, the, the pump chamber would then discharge to Perkright Leach Field. The discharge would be over 24 hour period. So there'd be very, very low doses of, of leachate that's discharged. So it can, can be easily assimilated into, to the water table, the groundwater and, and the treatment. The pre-treatment of the, of the, of the sewage discharge is such that it's innovative alternative technology, INA technology where it's, 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 it's the highest level of, of treatment that is permitted through DEM. So that was a significant engineering design aspect as well, the stormwater, the road design and the, and the septic design. The remaining aspects of the, of the design, the, the design of the collection system for the stormwater, the design of the sewer force main. All that has been completed and we, we hope to sit down with Director Woodhead in the next weeks to go over the stormwater and make sure, certain that there's nothing that we missed. I've been told already that the, the only reinforced concrete pipe is allowed within this town roadway. So we, we expect a different pipe. So we'll be, we'll be, I'm sure revising that. But we don't anticipate any, any, you know, real, real changes. After preliminary plan stage. All the lots are conforming to zoning for minimum area. And they, they'll all, they'll all support their, their rectangular nature. They're easy to maintain. They'll have subdrains on the lots that, that will protect the, the basement from the groundwater table, the controlled groundwater table. We have landscaping that's been provided that shows street trees as required by the, by the town of Portsmouth subdivision regulations. So we're, we're looking forward to any questions that the planning board has and and hope, hope for planning board approval tonight.
I'm there.
Right, that's correct, preliminary approval.
Members of the board, have any questions?
Sorry. I'm going to call it the urgency road that Windrock has not participated in. There any recent discussion on, on talks about connecting that? There's very big on not liking just one exit in case of an emergency. And I remember in the development, there was definitely a talk both Windrock and you guys. And if there are not, we have to talk to them or if you guys are in just point to talk to them, that's something that we very much have strong interest in.
White Rock had plotted an access easement, right away access easement to the northerly boundary of Ferrera Farms, southerly boundary of White Rock. We have plotted or proposed a right away easement in that same location. And again, as Jay had said, we, we, we're willing to construct the access, the driveway to that if the board chooses.
Mr. Harden, I'm not sure I heard your whole question, but I'm not sure what we can do, the applicant can do to force Windrock to complete its construction and bring its roadway up to, to our boundary.
That may become our problem.
Yeah. Because we did have discussions with them first, before you guys even came to it. And, and I am sure in the record, they said they would look into it. And if it's just that you guys have not met and discussed, maybe we can make that happen. And I'm sure we're not looking for a pay, right? But it's got to be where the fire truck has to get in or something, whether it's crushed stone or the subsurface made strong. I'm not sure what that is.
Design producer.
Yeah.
We'll be happy to reach out to, to Windrock to see if we can get some cooperation while we're doing our construction.
And then that you do not get any cooperation, we could please let us know.
I will. Mr. Chairman, could I just check? I know John Kent, the, the principal of the applicant is, is trying to get, I don't know if he's, if you recognize him on the, the screen? Whether he's trying to get in?
Name?
It would be John Kent.
Hang on, we'll get him on.
Okay, thank you.
He's on, he hasn't, he just has to start his, start his video and unmute him.
Okay, I'll send him a text and to do that.
All right, while he's doing that.
Can you hear me now?
Has a question.
Yes.
Would you come on?
Yes, he's there.
Please, like, clarify yourself, sir.
Jonathan Kent from Craig LLC.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, let me speak.
So Jay, did you want me to speak to that access road directly or elaborate on, on?
Yeah, have you reached, have you had any discussions yet with representatives of Windrock as to, you know, their plans to, to, to connect to your property?
I haven't had any discussions about their plans. Like I said, we're happy to bring it all the way to the property line, whether through that suitable subbase that's left with some loom on top for later modification. Or if they wanted, you know, with asphalted up to that, up to that boundary line, we're open to that as well. So we're happy to bring it to the line. I just don't know what I can do for their half of it. You know, happy to open that, that, that conversation up. I just don't know how responsive they will be.
That may be, may become our problem. And we appreciate your cooperation, great time. Okay, any other member of the board have questions? I have a couple. All right, I have two questions.
Seth Blatt, I have a few questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Blatt.
Mr. Dewhamill, thank you for your presentation. Was there any design consideration given to treatment of stormwater before it exits the site?
Oh yes, this, this stormwater management plan meets the requirements of the stormwater manual with 2015 DEM stormwater manual, where there's a sediment for bay. There is a sand filter prior to discharging to the, the the water, water volume retention area and mitigated to far below the pre-development rates discharging to the swell on site and then eventually to the McCory Lane collection system.
You, you don't anticipate any impacts to abutters?
I do not. We, we heard very loud and clear the concerns at the master plan and the existing system. You know, the foul fields rushing towards the, the dug swell on the, on the easterly boundary and then that swell not always maintained, silting in and having that overtop into the, to the wind, wind gate roadlots. So we have a collection system the size for the 100 year storm that's filtered the water quality volume to remove sediments that is retained within the, the retention basin, discharged over 24 hour period at, at rates far below existing rates to the collection system, McCory Lane, and completely bypassing the the wind, the wind, wind gate.
Windstorm, I think that would be windstorm.
I have a, I have trouble.
Thank you, that was a very detailed answer. Thank you for that. That, that alleviates my concerns of the abutters. My last, my last question, do you happen to know the percentage of impervious coverage for the record?
I don't have that readily. Lot coverage is 20% and we're not even close to.
I'm sure it meets the requirements, but I was just curious as to what.
Yeah. Three bedrooms, single family homes with two car garages and short driveway over the 20,000 square foot, it's, it's going to be in the at most.
I was more or less interested of like the total site impervious coverage, including structures and roadways.
You'd have to have that for final plan approval anyway, right?
Yeah, I can provide that in the final.
Thank you, that's all I had.
That's all I had, anybody else? All right, I had two questions. One you'd be answered, I was going to ask about when you're designing for storms, what storm were you designing for? We know that the town has one standard, but we like 100 year storms. So those are your calculations based on. I just have a, and maybe it's just an uninformed question, and that is your septic system is uphill.
Yes.
So you're going to be pumping uphill.
Yes.
You have a 10,000 gallon storage tank.
Yes.
What happens if they lose power for three days? Is there like backup generator or something like that?
We have a, we have a backup generator that's on the septic lot that would operate the 10,000 gallon storage pumps.
Hey, is it natural gas? Because otherwise you're going to have to have people bringing gasoline for that thing.
Yeah, I believe gas, natural gas. John, have you, do you have that answer?
Yeah, I would, I would believe we'd propose to bury a 2,000 gallon propane tank. That's what we've used on similar applications previously. And I believe that that can get you multiple days of, of life on a generator of 24 hour service.
Because we know it blows downhill. All right, does anybody else have any questions from the board? All right, Michael, let's open this up to the phone.
And so if you could dial star nine to raise your hand if you're on a call or raise your hand on the sunup of Joe Day.
In Mr. Day's letter we submitted as part of the Mr. Day, do you hear us?
Yes, good evening.
Have your name and, and address, please.
Joseph Day, 1443 East Main Road. Thank, thank you, thank you for referencing my letter in the beginning of the meeting. I appreciate that. The concerns I had was with regards to the, as my letter indicates, the traffic design flow, if you will. So a lot, as you can see here, the 18 single family homes and the addition or requested addition of an access road with the Windrock development, if you will. Pleasant View Avenue is going to absorb all the traffic, if you will, for these 18 single family homes. I just wanted to gain an understanding, was there any other options, if you will, as far as traffic and design flow? It, it, it appears to me that Pleasant View is going to be the, the main access for this large design, if you will. Was there any other options used for the traffic design flow?
If I could answer?
Go ahead.
Forever Avenue and only frontage.
Chris, if you just want to identify yourself for the record.
Chris Dewhamill with Dupree Engineering.
Thank you.
Pleasant View and Forever Street are the only access, only frontage for this parcel is 14 acre parcel is no access to East Main. I, I believe it in, in my view of, of traveling to the site, especially heading north to McCory Lane and then Forever Street is much more convenient. At McCory in East Main, there's the traffic light, which allows for breaks and safe ingress egress. So I, I believe McCory Lane will be the main collector road to Forever Street and then onto the site. But Pleasant View Avenue, that could be utilized if there is a a red light on, on East Main and, and you want to make a quick turn onto Pleasant View Ave and then, and then into the, into the site that, that is available. But I think the majority of northbound traffic on East Main will utilize McCory and exiting the site, the proposed Ferrera Farms, I believe you know, again, it's safer to go to the traffic light, but I don't have any data other than that, that, you know, personal data of of, of driving, getting to the site.
Okay, Joe, Joe Day, 1443 East Main Road. Now, I understand that the rationale with McCory Lane being the, the main light, if you will. It's just, we're going to absorb a significant amount of traffic on Pleasant View. Again, with the 18 single family homes being built here. And I just, again, I wanted to gain an understanding of your concerns with regards to pedestrian safety, bicycle safety. You know, I know we're a growing community and we have to balance the needs for residential housing, but this is, this is rather significant, if you will. So again, was there any plans, if you will, to, to build a road to access East Main Road directly, perhaps for this development and the Windrock development?
First of all, they can't answer for Windrock.
Okay.
And, and we don't have, we don't have frontage on, on East Main Road from this site.
It was not an option, Chris Dewhamill Dupree, it was not an option. Given, given the parcel, its location and it's, it's frontage only on Pleasant View Avenue and, and Forever Avenue and, and going down to 18 lots during the peak hour, AM peak hour, that's equal to 14 cars. Considering the ITE estimation of residential traffic during the peak hours, 14 cars per, per hour. It's it's minimal traffic.
I think that's about as good as you're going to get, Mr. Day. Any other question?
Is there any, is there a comprehensive landscape design with this development?
Yes, our landscape architect has prepared a a landscape design plan that's, that's included within the preliminary plan set. There it is on our screen showing street trees. Primarily the landscaping being the streetscape. The homes, home sites themselves, Mr. Kent can speak to, but they're very particular on, on soil, soil and sediment control during construction, revegetating the site, providing lawn areas for house values. They, they have a lot of experience. John, do you want to help?
Yeah, um, yes, to answer it, it's John Kent from Craig LLC. There is the full comprehensive landscape design plan. I think the landscape architect called out over 50 trees. I think in some cases there's three per lot, sometimes two, but a lot of times we see one per lot or less. So it's fairly dense for street trees. They're good sized trees, two and a half to three inch caliper. So those will all go in and those will go in early in the development because they add a lot of aesthetic value. So we'll put those in and then around the houses. We also do full landscape packages for people. Here you'll have landscaping. If you want something irrigated, you put mature landscaping around the houses. We'll add some buffering where appropriate. But we've done other projects on the island. You can see similar things we did. So we don't leave it bare at all. We do it for our benefit and the benefit of the neighbors. And like I said, and we do it, we try to do it early as opposed at the end of the project because I just think it adds a lot of value and helps to mitigate some of the line of sight that the neighbors will have.
Is there any plans with regards to any type of, because again, McCory Lane, Pleasant View are going to be the, the main entrance and exit, enter, exit avenues, if you will. Is there any type of any type of safety measures taking place with these roads or, or not?
When you mean, when you say safety, what do you mean, sir?
Well, for instance, maybe a, a speed bump or anything of that nature that, you know, may level set or reduce, reduce traffic, if you will, or miles per hour, speed limit.
Yeah, I mean, if that's directed towards me, again, John Kent at Craig LLC, I spoke to Chris and Jay about that. I mean, if there was signage that the board wanted to see, I mean, I don't have it right over that road or what can go there. I don't know if the speed bump would be something that would be, would be wanted or not. But again, if there was signage or some other mitigative measure, we're not against doing that. We're putting that as part of the plan set. But again, I'd have to obviously defer to the board, whereas they would control that. Or I don't know if that's DPW. But we are willing to at least entertain that if that's something everybody that has a, you know, that has the oversight on it is agreeable to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are they proposing a stop sign at the exit instead of that, you know, loop?
I don't, I think Chris would have to answer it again, John Kent. But again, we would, I would think it would make sense for us to have a stop sign. So I would most certainly put one in, even if it wasn't proposed. We can, we can easily add that to the plan set. You know, safety and welfare is obviously important to us on these things. And that I agree with would probably make sense. I don't see why, I don't see why it would not.
Any else, Mr. Day?
No, thank you for your time.
No problem. Hang on, Mr. Day, don't go away. Go ahead, Mr. Uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ed Lobes on the record. Dave brings up a good point, Mr. Kent, about the landscaping. And I do confess you planting plan and the number of street trees that you've included on the individual lots. Do you have any problem if we, if we make a decision to move forward that the landscaping plan and the planting plan becomes part of the road construction requirement in the pond?
No, I wouldn't be open to that. Like I said, we plan to follow it. You know, I'm not sure when the timeframe to complete it would be, but we typically just try to get all the infrastructure improved and then the binder coat put on the road. And at, at that point, we'll put the trees in. The only time we would avoid, you know, you, you have the winter, obviously, but it's August. We've been in extreme drought now. We would ask to just request to put it off probably a month, but I, I don't have an issue including that. Because like I said, we had very intention of doing it and doing it early.
Thank you.
All right, did you have?
I'm just going to make a comment from Mr. Day's comments. And he had some legitimate ones, but it's really look, the whole complex is almost a big curve. And it's just a very little bit of a straightaway. So the likelihood of people getting rolling along too fast is probably less of a chance than for just hard corners and straightaways. But I think sign in for signs that there are kids playing or whatever, there certainly be no harm.
The speed bump wouldn't hurt either, I mean.
That's right. Yeah, it wouldn't hurt, but that, that discussion has to happen there. Anybody else have any questions?
We have one more. Oh, we have several more hands that are raised now. We'll start with the 201 681 0864 number. If you could identify yourself, give your name.
Yes, sir. Yes, John Carcone, 90 McCory Lane.
Thank you, sir.
And I have a question. There's two drainage catch basins, A and B. Are both of them connected together with the pipe?
I assume the engineer will answer.
Chris Duhamel, yes, they are. The, the design point is each each basin will drain southerly to the 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe leading towards McCory Lane.
So the question that I have, it's a 24-inch pipe, which I'm assuming is sized for the the 18 homes and the, the land over there. It's going to McCory Lane. Question is, the size of the existing McCory Lane pipe, is that size sufficiently so that it won't overwhelm the, the system?
Chris Duhamel, it is. We, we consider the capacity of that 24-inch RCP pipe as, as the design capacity of the entire site. So that's really why the ponds are much greater in size than what you might anticipate from an 1,800-foot road with 18 lots. You know, there's quite a bit of stormwater management control that's required to, because of that limiting factor and because of, you know, the insurance of, of not discharging to, to to Wind, Windstone.
Do you happen to know the size of the existing drainage pipe on McCory Lane?
We do, but the, the constraint is on, on the property itself, the 24-inch pipe at, at a, at a minimal slope, 1% slope. So that, that, whatever that discharge is today, leading towards McCory Lane, and there's great capacity out of McCory Lane because it drops so quickly that the slope is, is so steep. So it has much, much greater capacity. So really the flat, the flat plate, pipe running southerly from the property southerly to McCory Lane is the constraint.
Great, thank you.
Any else?
The 401 683 0362. If you could identify yourself and speak any quotes slowly and clearly and also identify your address, please.
Plan Board Chair, members of the Plan Board, this is Brian Woodhead, Public Works. I just want to just state a few things, just like Mr. Lynch said, we'd like to get a, the technical review committee together so we can meet with Chris and Mr. Ken and whoever else is responsible so we can sit down and work out some of these concerns that we have. Number two, I'd like to send up the, the tree planning page number 20 to the tree commission, just to get their okay too before the meeting, just so we have all our ducks in a row. And then I heard something about a speed bump. I wasn't quite sure what they were saying, but Public Works is not in favor of speed bumps. Neither is the police or the fire. It's just a safety concern. But there is some guardrails and stuff like that at the end of Pleasant View and Ferrera, just for some safety measures for that drainage swell right there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, would that be something that would deal with the developer that you're meeting with?
Correct.
Right, that was God doesn't have to do with it. Don't even follow my own rules. Does anybody have any questions? All right, go ahead. Anybody else?
Yes, we have another one on here. We have, it's a Mark. If you could state your name slowly and clearly and also identify your address, please. Is there a Mark? Hello, Mark?
Hello, are you there? Is there any written comment?
There is one here. Unmute. If you, Mark, try to dial star or star nine. You're unmuted on the, if you're going through your computer, it's unmuted. Let me try it and mute you and then unmute you.
Star nine. Can you unmute yourself now? Star six.
Oh, mute, unmute star six. Yeah, that's, I was trying to get whoever it was because I can't manage that. QA. Mark, is it, is it Mark Kenny from 24 Windstone Ave, Windstone Drive? If you type in where you, you were in the Q and A section, I'll, I'll read your questions to the record. Just want to make sure it's him and I'll read. There isn't a brother named Mark Kenny. Would be lucky. We got, there's another, there's someone else with their hand raised that 202 6589183 will recognize this person and then book that Mark. So again, if you could identify yourself slowly, state your name and your address for us. Whoever is that? 202 6589183?
Star six.
Again, whoever is that number 202 6589183, you're on now. You're unmuted. I just want to call the number.
What button is that thing?
I don't know.
Doesn't go through the system, I think.
Hello, 202 6589183, you're on.
Star six.
Mr. Chair. Maybe you could advise them to put their comments in writing.
Well, we're going to, I think we're going to do the preliminary. So they've got one more shot at the nitty-gritty details, a lot of the questions. I'd rather have that file. Just like they were here. Speak if they were here. I understand your point. Where are we, Michael?
Okay, two of their hands raised and not responding.
Is there anybody else in queue?
Let's try again with Mark. Let's see if Mark. Hello, Mark? Now we have Kevin and Michelle.
Yes, this is Michelle Ake, 126 McCory Lane.
Thank you. What, what's your question?
Well, I have a similar question to Mark Kenny. He is our neighbor. So I will, I will repeat that question for you. Over the last, since the, my retention pond was built in the back corner of the lot, there has been a great deal of standing water since last winter due to the amount of water that does drain from that property. And the question is, will continue to be standing water even with the new drainage system is put in? We do appreciate all the effort and the fact that you guys have heard our problems with the draining system, but the standing water does seem to be a, a problem.
Why not, Nancy?
Thank you.
Chris Duhamel with Dupree. The standing water, it is within the temporary sediment controlled pond. It's not the same design as what we have for a permanent stormwater management system. It's, it's a, a temporary construction pond. So we don't want to have a direct discharge to the, to the drainage system of McCory Lane. That would transport sediments and silts. So we have a, a large sediment pond that, that allows for vapor transpiration, some, some infiltration, but mainly to have just, just the, during construction, have that water held there. That when the permanent pond is built, there is an outlet, a low-flow orifice outlet at the basin of the pond that would once, once sediments are routed from the collection system, from the road, the, the catch basins, the, the, the pipes, it's routed to a sediment basin, a small basin that takes out some of the, the stones and sediment. And then it's routed to a sand filter, which filters the water quality volume, the one-inch storm volume out so that the remaining water that gets into the pond is just for mitigation of the, of the increased stormwater runoff. So all of that water will drain out with a low-flow orifice. It'll drain into the McCory Lane subdivision. So there shouldn't be longstanding water in the, in the stormwater pond during this, when the final pond is built. During construction, you can anticipate, you know, just as is today, there'll be some, some water being held until all the slopes are vegetated and stabilized and, and sediment doesn't transport out. But.
Okay. Michelle Ake again. Thank you. I appreciate that. Just, we don't want to replace one problem with another. So as long as it's not a permanent solution of standing water, I'm, I'm good with that answer. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Let's try this again with Mark.
So if you please, again, this is Michelle Ake, 126 McCory Lane. I literally read Mark's question off the board. So unless he has anything else. We had the same standing question. So I think the question has been answered unless he.
I'm not sure if it's Mark Kenny because it just, it just says Mark. I'm not sure if it's Mark Kenny, because it just says Mark on the log, so.
He just posted in the questions and he said, "Thank you, Michelle," so I think he's also.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Technology for him.
That's okay, I work for a software company, I got you.
So who do we have?
All right, let's hear this, 202-658-9183. Okay, something coming from their line. Address.
Star six.
Yeah, they're unmuted. It's not saying it. There's some kind of feedback coming through.
Yeah. Why do we do it like that? Give them one more try, like.
Last call for 202-658-9183. You are live and unmuted.
That's correct, and everybody should be aware of that. This is only, they're only, the applicant is only asking for preliminary approval. The nitty-gritty details are in the final approval, and that's going to happen at a later date. So if people still have questions about this project, they're going to have another opportunity to address those questions, and it'll be scheduled and they'll be noticed and things like that. Do we have, anyone else something? Anything else?
Yeah, that's, that was it.
No other written comments?
No.
All right. Any other discussion by the members of the board? What's your pleasure?
Luke Harding, I'd like to make a motion to give a positive preliminary plans, and let everybody know that they will have another shot if they have any questions. As far as we're concerned, opinion on the initial preliminary plan.
I know in the letter from Mr. Woodhead, Fox thought that there is yet to be a portion of water and factors to approval, and that's true approval, plenty of approvals.
Those are in this, they're in this package.
Yeah, as long as we have all those, but just, you know, subject all.
Yeah, subject, of course, it's, all approvals that are still need, that's like preliminary to modify.
In the formation of the TRC, would it specifically ask for TRC?
That's right, the Tree Commission.
And the Tree Commission.
Yep. So all of his concerns, that they've been, it will be brought up by the next.
We can modify a motion for the Tree Commission, TRC, and all of our approvals. Governor, anything else?
Should have agreed that the landscape and the planting plan is part of the road construction requirements. So it'll be subject to the road bond if they correct that statement.
No, you're not.
You've got to teach the technical review committee, Tree Commission.
Excuse me?
Sorry.
Mr. Bisnet?
Yes.
I had a very hard time hearing everything listed as a condition for approval.
All right, let's go through it. TRC.
That's a technical review committee, that's Ed Lowe speaking.
Thank you.
Tree Commission.
For Mr. Woodhead's testimony, he wants to send sheet 20 to Tree Commission, you got that, Dee?
Yep.
Sheet 20, that's the landscape plan.
Yes.
And that'd be a letter agreed to have the landscape plan and the planting plan part of the road construction requirements in the bond.
We're second to that motion.
Second, Ed Lowe, second.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote, Mr. Lowe.
Aye.
Luke Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Garceau.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Say aye in mind. Mr. Collet.
Aye.
God, this is a, aye, any nays? The ayes have, motion carries. We need one more motion. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman. Could I, this is Jay Lynch again, could I ask that the board just continue the hearing for final plan approval until to your September meeting?
You're going to be able to get all this done in one month?
What do you think, Chris?
I would hope to, but if not, you could continue it again, it would just be easy to advertise, wouldn't it? It's hard to.
Well, because of the technology issues, if we're going to do that, I'd like you to send out another notice to the abutters. I know you're not legally required to do that, but if you're going to do a final plan review, and obviously we've had technical issues, would that be acceptable to you?
Yeah, if we could just do it by regular mail rather than certified mail.
So that would be a separate motion. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to continue the petition by McCory Lane LLC, final plan approval to, with proper notice, as just discussed, it's a September 9 meeting.
Yeah, it'll be the September 9. Is there a second? Luke Harding. Is there any other discussion? Lowe's.
Aye.
Harding, Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Mr. Garceau.
Aye.
Wilson.
She might.
Yeah. Mr. Collet.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Bisnet, aye, any nays? No, the ayes have. All right, motion to adjourn by Mr. Harding.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Second on motion, pick one. We're out of here. Thanks, everybody. No, this was not that easy.